Good evening. Welcome to the Spring 2024 Green Living Seminar at the Massachusetts College of Liberal Arts in North Adams, Massachusetts. This is an annual lecture series hosted at MCLA each January through April. The lectures are sponsored by the Environmental Studies Department and generous donors to MCLA. We thank our donors for their past and ongoing support. This year's lecture series is entitled "Greening New England." Each week's lecture will highlight the organizations, achievements, and ongoing efforts that are making New England more sustainable. You can find recordings of previous weeks and previous years' lectures on our YouTube channel called MCLA ENVI. Tonight, we will learn about the work of an organization that focuses all of its work right here in Berkshire County. The Berkshire Regional Planning Commission serves the towns in our county by providing expert assistance related to planning, transportation, education, mapping, and other services. Of particular emphasis for tonight's lecture is how the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission helps advance our local and regional goals of sustainability through its work with its community collaborators. Our speaker tonight is Seth Jenkins. Seth is a senior community planner with the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. I'm especially excited to welcome Seth and to hear his presentation because Seth was actually the first person I had in mind when I was starting to plan this semester's lecture series. And Seth's presentation tonight is called "Local and Regional Sustainability Initiatives with the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission." Please help me welcome Seth to MCLA.
Thank you, Dan. So, we're going to keep it pretty informal tonight. If you have a question, or if you want to stop me at any point, please feel free to just raise your hand and jump in. If something's not clear, just stop me. I have, again, a fairly informal presentation, so we'll just jump into it. So, the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission does planning work, land use planning work, for all the Berkshire County towns. So, we work with both local citizens, town governmental groups, so planning boards, select boards, zoning boards of appeals, conservation commissions, but also nonprofits like land trusts, and then regional, state, and federal grants or initiatives in the county. And just some sites here, there's Greylock, Sheffield's Town in Berkshire County. That's, I believe that's the North Adams Main Street with the car show. Is it a little loud? So, in terms of what area we cover, we work in all of Berkshire County. So Berkshire County extends the length of Massachusetts from the Vermont border down to Connecticut and all on the west with New York. So there are thirty-two different municipalities in Berkshire County. And we work with most of them, generally the smaller communities. So, the larger towns like Pittsfield or North Adams usually have their own dedicated planning, land use planning staff, but we help out the smaller communities. In Berkshire County, there are one hundred and twenty-nine thousand people, ranging with municipalities ranging from forty-four thousand people in Pittsfield to one hundred and sixty-one in the very bottom right-hand corner in Mount Washington. So, most communities range somewhere in the middle. So, in terms of the agency's focus, we have a variety of different departments. I'm in the Community Planning Department, but we also have Community Development and Housing, and they help administer community development block grant programs or housing rehabilitation programs. We have Data Information Services that provides mapping and information services to different Berkshire County towns, including census information. We have an Economic Development Department that works with different towns on economic development projects, like the Greylock Works is an example of a project that we did, or the Eagle Mill in Lee, which is a mill that's being reconverted into housing with some affordable, an allotment of affordable units. Also, environmental and emergency preparedness and energy planning, regional initiatives, transportation planning, and public health. So, the Public Health Department had a real role to play in the COVID-19 pandemic. They were instrumental in setting up the vaccination, the different spots where there were vaccination clinics for people to come in. In terms of why urban planning and where the field came from and how it relates to sustainability, the field originated in the late eighteen hundreds as urbanization was really intensifying and people recognized that, you know, with cities came these concurrent problems of pollution and incompatible land uses and traffic and congestion. And a lot of it revolved around this idea of the common good. And so, land use planning is usually focused on this kind of utilitarian concept of providing the greatest common good to the population. And so, I have a couple quotes on here. One's way back from Aristotle, one's more recently, but they basically focus on this concept of the tragedy of the commons. And I don't know if you guys have talked about the tragedy of the commons, but basically there used to be common greens where you could graze your animals, and so people would take advantage of that, and they would overgraze these areas, and it would result in environmental degradation. And this whole concept kind of comes around of shared resources aren't cared for the same way private property is because you don't have the same interest. And so, planning is focused on, as much as possible, getting people to recognize these shared resources and planning in the future for how to maximize those for the greatest good. So, in terms of what I do at Berkshire Regional Planning, I work with municipalities to update community plans. So, typically, community plans would be a master plan or an open space and recreation plan. Right now, we're working with the town of North Adams on updating their open space and recreation plan, but ultimately, these are really related to sustainability because we're trying to plan for future growth without overtaxing the resources at hand. So, groundwater resources, or wastewater infrastructure, or transportation infrastructure. So, towns create a master plan forecasting out ten to fifteen years in the future and saying, "Are we going to need to upgrade our sewage treatment plant? Are we going to need to improve, make improvements at town hall?" And so, we work with them to kind of recognize what they need to, where they need to allocate resources, but then also to communicate that to their townspeople, because it's important that the townspeople are supportive of those concepts, especially here in Massachusetts where you have town meeting and, you know, every year that town has to approve a budget. If your populace isn't supportive of these suggested changes, they may not be supportive of allocating money in that way. Other types of planning that we, we work with towns in the area, we work with them to update zoning. So, that might have a real impact on sustainability, and that, you know, most rural towns have very large lot, minimum lot sizes. So, you can't, you can't build a house in many Berkshire County towns unless you have two acres minimum. Getting towns to recognize that maybe we should allow for multifamily or three or four-unit houses is really in our own best interest. That's, so, so getting them to update their zoning is important. Also, identifying where housing needs are. Are there, is the population aging, and that there's no senior, senior facilities for people to age into, or are there the, the resources in the town for folks to stay in their homes? And then we also have a program called the Local Technical Assistance Program where municipalities can approach us and request a project to be done. That could be something like a site-specific plan for a park, or it could be, "Hey, help us analyze our stormwater system and find out where we need to make improvements." In terms of master plans, we've recently completed master plans in Washington, Windsor, Monterey, and Lenox. Those are all, probably you aren't familiar with those communities, but those are kind of mid-county and south. We have current master plans that we're working in Lee, just starting in Leansboro and West Stockbridge. And I've just added some bullet points about what types of things master plans try and account for as you're planning for the next ten to fifteen years in your town. I also mentioned open space and recreation plans. So, these are a plan which accounts for all types of open spaces in the town. So, that could be parks, but it could also be a water protection district, or a wellhead protection district, or it could be a lake protection district, or it could be Chapter 61, which is a tax abatement program in the state that incentivizes agricultural operations to remain in agricultural production. So, that's a tax incentive, but the town also gets some benefit from that program. And I've just kind of put some different types of maps. These are all maps that we're working in Cheshire. So, Cheshire's just south of Adams, and these are examples of the types of maps that we produce that get integrated into the plan. So, this is development trends. This shows when housing was built. So, you can see the older housing, the green, those are eighteen fifty, or seventeen fifty to nineteen hundred, whereas blue is two thousand and one to two thousand to the current time, right? And you can see where the development happens, right? The, the green is concentrated around the town centers. The blue tends to be more development that happens sprawling further, further from the town centers. And again, that's where land use planning comes in to try and discourage that sprawling This map is land use. It's, it's hard to see, and there aren't a whole lot of varieties of land uses in Cheshire, but that shows, those are your kind of traditional industrial, commercial, residential parks-type uses. And then this map is different water features, so cold water fisheries, vernal pools, wellhead protection areas. So, like, this is where Cheshire draws their water from. So, they want to protect the area around that so that they can maintain clean drinking water for the town. Another project that I'm involved in here in, well, actually region-wide, but we did have an active farmer's market this past fall. If anyone went out on, I think it was Wednesdays here at MCLA, we received USDA grant funding to work with some other partners, Berkshire Grown, Berkshire Bounty, to institute a mobile farmer's market that is geared toward getting local produce into the hands of low-access and low-income individuals. So, we're focused on trying to get farmer's market product to communities or areas that might not have good access to a grocery store, or there might be people that are, like here on campus. I mean, the, the van was set up on campus in terms of, a lot of college students don't have their own vehicles, so it's harder for them to get to food. So, the other benefit is that it's a great partnership with local farms in that it provides them with a new source of vending their product without having to put all the time and effort into going to a farmer's market, setting up. You know, it's a way for them to market their product and have someone else do all of that sales. They just do the production and get it to the, the operation. Did anybody take advantage of the mobile farmer's market? Yep, cool. Another program that we have in the agency is community development. They have a home modification loan program that, that provides low, low-interest loans for, especially for upgrades on older homes that might need some energy improvements to make them more efficient. Maybe they need modifications to make them ADA accessible, or, or if someone in, in the home needs wheelchair access, you know, that, that can help to provide funding for those types of projects. Data Information Services is focused on generating maps, but also on presenting census information to folks in the county in a more easily digestible manner than going to the census website and trying to download all those data tables. So, if you go to the Berkshire Regional Planning website, you can then negotiate to Berkshire Benchmarks, which will provide you with all sorts of census information about all of the different thirty-two municipalities within Berkshire County. So, you know, age distribution, income distribution, housing types. So, it's, it's, might be helpful for some of you all with your, your research projects. And then the last thing that I'm talking, well, not the last thing, but the last thing in terms of the information services, we've just released a website, again, with funding from the state, called berkshireoutside.org. And so, I want to talk a little bit about Berkshire Outside. It's a, it's kind of an all-inclusive database-driven map for the entire county that provides any kind of outdoor recreation information to anyone that, that goes to the site. So, the first project that I, that I worked on when I came to the agency a couple years ago was actually going out and helping to do the assessing of all of these data points and finding out, okay, trailheads, how's the parking? Is there a trail map? Is there an information kiosk? So, all of that information got aggregated into this one site. So, you can see here, I mean, this is, this is just a screenshot of the, how it appears on a computer, but all of these different data points correspond to something over here. You know, I mean, this is selected based on winter sports. So, these are all winter sports locales within the county. And you can select by the name, you can select by the town, you can select by downhill skiing or cross-country skiing, or if you want to know where all of the water access points are, on the Housak River, or on the Housatonic River. All that information is, is easily found on the website. We even have some recommendations on safety. Be aware of, of when hunting seasons, when, when there's an active hunting season, when do you need to wear blaze orange, what types of things should you have in your backpack to make sure that you're safe when you go out. Another feature of the website is that it includes an events calendar that's linked through other organizations. So, if other organizations like BNRC or the trustees have an activity at one of their properties, they can send us that information and it gets posted into our calendar. So, if you want to go on like a guided hike, a birders hike, you could find out information about that, or tree identification in the winter. These are the types of things that are advertised through the website. So, it's, it's a great resource to find out what's going on in the area and also during the weekends, or, or, you know, if you've got time in an afternoon. The, the last thing that I'll mention about the Berkshire's Outside website is that it also has information about local clubs and groups and different outfitters. So, if you, if you wanted to find out where you could get involved with adult soccer, there's a Berkshire Adult Soccer League that has teams in different communities, and then they play pickup soccer games. There's a tab there that you can go and find out more information about all of those different activities and athletics. So, moving through other programmatic areas, we also have economic development as a programmatic area within the agency. We produce the SEDS report, which is, I think, the first one came out in two thousand and ten, so this two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-seven is an update. But these are larger regional efforts that, that try and aggregate all of the different opposing ideas within different municipalities, whether they want to coordinate parks planning, or a rail trail project, or on-road bicycle improvements. These types of things are coordinated through a regional agency like ours. We have a new program in digital equity, which became evident as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Became obvious that there was a big discrepancy between wealthier households that had good Wi-Fi and good access to technology and good ability to use the technology, as opposed to maybe folks that didn't have good, consistent Wi-Fi, or didn't have those technological resources, or didn't know how to use those things. And so, the state is providing funding to help push out this digital equity effort to make sure that Wi-Fi coverage is consistent throughout the state, rural, urban, all, all different areas, that, that people have educational programs, that they can go and learn how to use different technologies, that there's resources available to, to getting technology for them. We'll skip over those couple. So, environmental energy planning, that's, you know, when Dan talked to me about presenting on environmental topics, this is probably the, the most clearly dovetailed part of our work that we do, although I think that you can argue that land use planning overall is a really sustainability-driven topic, and that all the work that we do is sustainability-focused. But, you know, in terms of what people think of as sustainability, the environmental and energy planning program probably most closely fits that, that bill. So, as I mentioned before, towns produce these reports, like a master plan or an open space plan. There's also hazard mitigation and municipal vulnerability preparedness planning. It's a mouthful. But those are, those are ways towns try and plan, again, for all sorts of sustainability topics, whether it's climate change-driven needs in terms of a warming shelter, or a cooling shelter, or emergency evacuation routes, or, you know, planning for stormwater. And you'll see on some of these, some of the next couple slides, you know, how, how impactful stormwater can be in, in destroying infrastructure. Also, talking about the gateway cities and, you know, old industrial properties that are really hard to reutilize, but really make the most sense to, to try and reutilize, right? So, old mills, old industrial sites, that's the Berkshire Brownfields program, trying to reuse those sites so we're not taking greenfield, or forested, or agricultural land and developing them because they're cheaper, right? It's, it's easier to go in and, and develop an area that has not had any contamination, but from, from the town standpoint, it's, it's more beneficial to fix these underutilized areas and, and make sure that they can be re, reutilized and, and are contributing to tax revenues, right? I mean, a vacant site isn't contributing to your town's tax coffers, whereas an apartment complex is going to be contributing to, you know, all of the, all of the costs that go into operating the town. There's also a clean energy program, again, through the state of Massachusetts. That's where we come in. We, we're kind of the intermediary between the state and towns. There's a green communities program that sponsors towns with infrastructure improvements, energy improvements, or a new roof on a building, or a new salt shed for highway department. So, and then lastly, like I mentioned, stormwater management planning. And that's what this photo is. This is a group that I think is in Cheshire, doing some work on one sixteen, and they're doing some, some bank stabilization and some culvert replacement in that area. So, in terms of why this is necessary, I'm sure you guys are all familiar with the, the changes that come with climate change, but we're seeing it right now, right? I mean, it's, it's February first, and it's going to rain, the snow's going to melt. You know, it used to be the case, even twenty years ago, that, that in Massachusetts, you'd get snowfall, and it would last through the spring. Now, we get these events where you get snowfall, and then you get a thaw, and then you get rain on snow. And what does that do? Well, it results in less snowpack that, that infiltrates into the ground and replenishes groundwater. You get more of these frozen pipes. You get more of these runoff events where not only are you having the snow melt, but you're also having rainfall on top of it, and that can overtax your stormwater system. You get these increased storm ice jams and ice storms. I live on the Housak up in Pownell. About a week ago, it was amazing to see all the big chunks of ice as they came flowing down the, flowing down the river, you know? And, and when those get compacted, and, and they can cause flooding, I think that's a real problem in Cheshire. Right north of the Housak Reservoir, there's a spot where you get ice collecting, it causes flooding, it causes flooding on the highway. So, you can see, again, here in this top image, this is kind of what we're talking about with these major rainfall events where you get bank destabilization and the roadway, roadway collapses. But there are all sorts of carry-on effects from climate change, whether we're talking about increased pests and invasive species, Emerald Ashbore, or the Dutch Elm Disease, like Dan was talking about with trees here in, in Adams. You get folks who are needing to find shelter from either heat or cold. You get a lot more impacts on your roadways, as, especially dirt roads, as the, the roads are, are freezing and thawing. So, you know, planning for these changes that come with climate change, and especially the unpredictability of it, is, is a pretty large task, but that's what we're focused on in trying to help municipalities prepare for those things. Just a little more information about, you know, what we're seeing in, in terms of storm events. In terms of precipitation, the largest increases that we're seeing in the country are in the northeast in terms of, you know, greater, more extreme precipitation events. And we see it here in Massachusetts as well. And you can really see in the timeline here that there's a very clear, about nineteen seventy, you start to see these events that are, you know, going above the, the mean amount So, environmental planning is focused on all of these different aspects of land use planning. So, you know, land use decision, how are we going to allocate our land resources? Are we going to, are we going to allocate them toward housing? Are we going to put in commercial? Are we making sure that we're protecting our water quality and preserving the lands around where we have our wellheads? Are we making sure that we're responsibly dealing with our waste? You know, here in Berkshire County, there, I, in Pittsfield, there was a waste incineration facility that handled most of the municipal waste in Pittsfield, and I think some of the other communities sent their waste. And I think some of the other communities sent their waste there. That facility closed down a few years ago. We're currently trucking all of our waste out of the county for the most part. So planning for recycling, what do you do when recycling is no longer profitable enough to, to warrant the cost of picking it up and putting it somewhere? So then energy planning, you see it, if you look at all the ridge lines in the area, right? I mean, you see the, the wind farms that have gone in. Those are, those are projects that we've been involved in and, and participated with. And then lastly, wildlife restoration and creating, I think there's a greater recognition of the need for large unbroken tracts of land to promote habitats and enable species to move through as they migrate. So, you know, recognition that, that we need to not only preserve forests, but we need to have unbroken sections of forest where animals can move through or where, you know, as climate change occurs, you can get organisms that are moving north in, as, as part of their natural push to new, colonize new habitats. So some, some projects that the agency's participated in that, that you might be familiar with here because they're, they're somewhat local. Housak Valley High School has a big solar field that they put in. You can go on their website, see how much energy that's producing. But that's, that's right on the school grounds and it's producing energy for the school. The Graylock Works is right down the road. That, that's a mill reutilization project. And then I'm not exactly sure where these culverts are, but you can see there's a big push to move away from what are called perched culverts. So you can see up here on the top, these drain pipes where the water has to fall to, to get back to the stream and to, to switch from that to more of a natural system where you can have movement of organisms up and down the river system, right? In this situation, you can't have fish migrating up. That's a, that's a break in the natural environment. So you can't have organisms moving up and down the streamway like that. So here's another example of kind of a situation where planning for these major stormwater events is in the town's best interest. I believe this was part of Irene. So that's, that's a roadway where the, the culvert just completely, I mean, the, it destroyed the road because the culvert wasn't sized adequately for the stormwater that flowed through it. And so it undermined all of the, the infrastructure and just washed out the road and then pretty much destroyed it. So, so planning for those increased rainfall events by adequately sizing those types of stream passages is, is a pretty important thing for towns and, and the region. Last one, when we talked about the green communities projects, these are working with municipalities to make improvements to town buildings, to town fleets of vehicles, to, you know, police and fire vehicles. So, and, and the other thing that I would say about that is that, you know, oftentimes the private sector follows the public sector. So by, you know, making sure that the, the public sector can make these improvements, other folks see that and they say, you know, oh, the town is saving 50% on their energy expenditure. Maybe it's worth me making those kinds of investments in my own home. But, you know, as a quasi-public agency, we really, that's where we can have our most greatest effect in terms of working with those towns to make those types of improvements. As I mentioned, we also have a transportation planning program that, that's not just focused on roads and private vehicles, but also public transit, also on multi-use paths, like the Ashewiltecook Trail. There was a presentation that I was just in yesterday talking about the Adventure Trail, which is going to connect the Ashewiltecook with the Mohican Path in Williamstown. You know, making, making those connections takes a regional player to coordinate the activities between maybe some towns that don't always like to cooperate. You know, Berkshire County towns, they don't always like to play nice with each other. And so sometimes it takes a, a larger agency to come in and, and get them to see where they have common ground and, and can get more, more efficacy. And so this is just, this is off our annual report. These are some projects that are, you know, top transportation projects that we're trying to incentivize in the area. So, so things like passenger rail, both east-west passenger rail, but also the, the New York City rail from, to Pittsfield. Expanding BRTA, BRTA is Berkshire Regional Transit Authority. So that's the, the buses, you know, is expanding microtransit. So microtransit are not larger buses, but maybe like your council on aging vans or your, there's a new service down in southern Berkshire County called the Tri-Town Connector, which offers a reduced-cost fare to folks in Monterey, West Stockbridge, Stockbridge. But it's, it's a service that you can call up and say, hey, I need a ride to the doctor tomorrow. Can you come and pick me up? And it's, it's, it's very reasonable. It's like $4 a, a person. So, but again, it takes a, a larger agency to coordinate those types of activities. Lastly, we have a
Public health?
Planning Department. And they're working not only in kind of traditional public health, like we would think about when we talk about the COVID-19 pandemic and vaccination clinics and things like that, but also opioid addiction prevention. And if you've seen the billboards, if you go down to Pittsfield, you've seen the billboards that say, carrying a loxone. And folks, that there's a quote, I saved a life. That's an advertising campaign that we've got, you know, trying to make people aware of the prevalence of opioids and, and the need for folks to, to carry those types of rescue, lifesaving medications that can really make the difference. But if you don't have it, you can't really do anything in that situation. We also work with public health departments throughout the county. So public health departments are going to be going out and inspecting housing and making sure that it's habitable. They're going to be going to restaurants and making sure that, you know, food sanitation is maintained, that cleanliness is, is observed. They're going to be going out and making sure that septic systems are installed properly and that the, the installation site has the right percolation characteristics to allow, you know, your, your, your waste, I'm drawing a blank, leach field is what I was trying to think of, that, that your leach field is able to, to handle the effluent that's coming from your septic tank. So, and then I also mentioned the farmer's market. That, that actually, I am part of the community planning, but that's, that's within our public health program. So the last thing I'll say is that we do have a variety of internships that we offer in the summer. So if you're interested in any of these topics, I know that we have an internship for stormwater assessments. So that would be going out in communities and, and reviewing, you know, what's, what's the size of this culvert? How, how much, how much stream flow can we expect in an extreme event? Is this adequately sized? You know, identifying where those spots are that are the highest priority infrastructure improvement projects to do. We also have an intern available this summer in the Berkshire Outside website, going out and, and doing some of those assessments and, and finding out, you know, what is the condition of the parking lot at the trailhead? Or are there, is there adequate signage? Is there, so? So that's, that's pretty much it. I, I went through it a little quicker than I thought I would, but I'm, I'm pretty close. I have some cards here if you want to grab one. You can email me if you want to have questions, have questions about any of the programs. If you want to go to the website, if you're interested in an internship, they are posted on our website, you know, in the employment tab. So, and I guess that, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to, to jump all over you. But questions? Yeah. Sure, yep. It's, it's on our website. Yep, yep. Other questions? Yep. So we receive some money from the state because, so in the late 90s, many of the Massachusetts communities got rid of county-level government. And so I think there was a recognition on the state's part that, you know, there was maybe a missing element to, to coordinate some of these types of activities. And so there, there, there are 13 regional planning agencies in the state. We receive funding from communities as well. You know, they have a, I don't, I'm, I'm trying to remember exactly how it's characterized. I mean, it's, it's basically like depending on their population size, they have a, a contribution that they make. So it's combination of grant funding, funding from local communities and then funding from the state and some from the federal government too. Yeah, thank you. I'm happy to stick around if you want to ask more questions. If you didn't, if you were shy or you want to ask something else, I'll be here for a few minutes.